...chambers, please stand and join us for the pledge of allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Kathleen, can we get roll call, please?
Wilson?
Here.
Davidson?
Here.
Fleming?
Here.
McCambell?
Here.
Scott.
Okay. Tonight, we'll start with Mayor's Awards. And first on the list is my brother from another mother. We had the, this guy's just really, really brought a lot of enthusiasm and excitement back to Burlington. Not that Burlington's not exciting. All right, thank you, all four of you that gave me the nod. But it was just a fantastic event this weekend, anybody that came out to see it. And he was the straw that stirred the drink. And I just, I'll tell you, I'm just excited, I'm already excited for next year. So I'll give him a chance to speak for himself. But be it known, on behalf of the city of Burlington, Iowa, I'd like to thank you for being a model Burlingtonian. Your commitment to this great city and those in it who are physically or mentally challenged is amazing. The Midwest Magic Annual Basketball Game is a fantastic community event. Your enthusiasm and spirit helped make Burlington a great place to live, work, and play. On March 21st, 2016, this Mayor's Award is presented to Brett Mitchell. Come on down. And of course, you would show up with Brett present in the line of green there.
And actually, can I get one?
Absolutely. Joe, come on, come on up. I definitely need a picture with Joe. And you were a rock star on Saturday, I just want you to know that. All right, turn this way so I can get a picture with you too. Let's face this way. All right. Now I am officially somebody. Thank you, sir. Would you please have a few words for us, Mr. Mitchell?
I wrote a few things down. I didn't know, actually at the game...
I'm gonna have you stand, I'm gonna have your face, that's right in front of the microphone, and the camera's going to get you, so they'll have to, they're gonna replay this. So they'll be able to see your face on the replay.
Well, actually, at the game, the mayor presented me with the award. And I looked over to the bench, and I saw thirty-five people that were the reason I was on the team. And for me, them thirty-five people deserved that award more than me. And Joe stood out, because Joe was somebody who, by himself, I know brought at least two-hundred people to that game. There was well over a thousand there. And I just felt the need to share it and give that award to him on that given day.
All right.
Joe was pretty cool, you know? And as far as magic, I've got something a little cheesy here, but I got, magic is. Magic is getting covered in buckets of confetti thrown on you by the mayor. Magic is listening to Miss Iowa sing an amazing halftime show while one of your players dances her hard out. Magic is feeling American pride in your heart when the National Anthem is sang by one of your very own players. Magic is having four video cameras, a TV station, a newspaper, and a radio station cover your event. And I know I told you about, two months ago, my dream was to see that event open up to ten o'clock news. But really, magic, you know, is having the support of the community, police department, fire department, cheering from the upper bowl, but watching all that come together. Just, most of all, it's just witnessing forty-two people's lives, you know, changed forever because of a thousand people showing up and rooting them on. So I thank you guys.
Thank you. Gonna happen without your help. Is that me?
I don't know. I have a lot of clapping.
All right. Anyways, again, a big thank you to you. It was, it was an amazing afternoon. This other Mayor's Award winner, she's a special person. Just has a huge heart and has another event that brings different people in the community together. And she runs the soup every Tuesday night at the loft. The lawyer put on her heart a while back, and she ran it by some people. And I started off strong helping her. I haven't been a lot of help here lately, but she's, she's been relentless. And she, her and a group of people, they serve up soup and bring, bring all kinds of different people together. And I just, I just think that's fantastic, and we need more people like that. So tonight, I'm really excited to give her this award. Be it known, on behalf of the city of Burlington, Iowa, I'd like to thank you for being a model Burlingtonian. Your positive attitude, your desire to help those in need, bring people together and feed the poor, help make Burlington a great place to live, work, and play. You are special. On March 21st, 2016, this Mayor's Award is presented to Mary Tager. Would you come on down, please? This is gonna be great for my street cred. Mary, would you have a few words for us, please? And we should, I appreciate you too.
Like Mayor McCambell said, I don't take the credit for this. I think God wouldn't let me get past it. He kept reminding me that we had this loft building that First United Methodist Church added when they rebuilt their church downtown. And that there was space for people that needed to have a nice meal. And we don't just do soup. We do whatever entree I happen to have food for at the time. And the community's been very generous. I had so much chicken from the Rotary cookout that I was able to do four or five additional meals with it. I've had donations from Kayla's cupboard and from the community pantry. So, and in addition to community people, Shane's made us vegetable beef soup three times, I think. And I don't do it by myself. My sister Barb Brewer plays the piano during our meal every single week. And my brother sings along and cleans up after us. And so that's two other churches that are represented. I had Shane as a partner, and he's too busy to be there very often. And Tammy King as a partner, and she brings desserts almost every week. We give her a break now and then. And anybody's welcome. It's a free meal, but it's, it's for people that maybe eat alone and would like to have someone to eat with and enjoy the piano music and visiting with their neighbors and friends. And it's for folks that could use some help with their food budget. So we just do it every Tuesday for whoever wants to come.
What time is that?
From five-thirty to, from five to six-thirty.
All right. Thank you, Mary. Thank you. I'm gonna give the Mayor's Award winners a chance to dip on out of here if you want to, so you don't have to sit through the rest of it. But again, I just wanna thank you both for coming down. How you doing, Barb? Good to see you. Brett, you're my hero.
Hey, I'll see you next year.
Sounds good. Okay. Next on the agenda is the consent agenda. All items listed under Item One, Consent Agenda, having been discussed, are considered to be routine by the City Council and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion of these items. If a discussion is desired, that item will be removed from the consent agenda and will be considered separately. On the consent agenda, we have the usual finances miscellaneous, minutes of previous meetings, payroll and city claims, beer liquor, wine and cigarettes, reports and bonds. We have two resolutions. The first resolution approving renewal of taxi cab vehicle for hire license for Dennis Charles Maines doing business as Yellow Cab. The second is a resolution approving the Burlington Avenue Extension Acquisition Plan. We have two public hearings set for April 4th. Now, the first is consideration of an ordinance, amending ordinance number thirty-three sixty being an ordinance creating the Burlington Crossing PUD by making changes to Section Five E signage. And the second is consideration of a permanent encroachment agreement with Douglas and Dana Atkins for encroachment into the city of Wrightaway at nine-fourteen Maple Street. And we also have an appointment, Mayor Pro Tim?
Thank you, Your Honor. Frank Statler to fulfill an empty spot on the Renewable Energy Commission.
So we thank you, Frank. Is there anybody from the audience that would like any of these items removed from the consent agenda? Can I see none? Counsel?
None for me. Your Honor, I move that we approve all listed under Item One, Consent Agenda.
Go to second.
Second.
Kathleen?
Wilson?
Aye.
Davidson?
Aye.
Fleming?
Aye.
McCambell?
Aye.
Okay. All right, next we have time set for hearing for consideration of a general obligation loan agreement at a principal amount not to exceed one million, three-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars. Publication has been made in the Hawkeye as prescribed by law.
Again, this is a pre-levy loan. So it's the intent to enter into a loan over the course of the next few months. We'll have to go through the bonding procedures following this over the next two months. But the amount in here, the one-point-three-five million, is to cover items that were in FY seventeen capital improvement plan. The items on the capital improvement plan that were listed to be paid for with bond proceeds was ambulance, our miscellaneous street program where we set aside funds on an annual basis, then our main HMA resurfacing project, and then the match on the Mount Pleasant Street HMA resurfacing. That match, that's a one-point-seven-million-dollar overall project with a local match coming from both, I think that's both us and the city of West Burlington are matching on that, because that's a combined project. The total amount of those different items is at that, right in that one-point-three-million-dollar range. With the not to exceed the one-point-three-five million, one of the things that we do have to do, and why we're doing this prior to going out and do the actual bonding, in order to collect property taxes on this next year's budget, we have to express the intent to be borrowing these funds. And what you'll see in here is for the budget that begins this July 1, this next fiscal year, that the repayment expected in this next year is two-hundred-and-thirty-seven thousand, seven-hundred-and-thirty-eight dollars. This gives us the ability to file this with the county auditor and certify it for property tax collection in this next budget cycle. And that's been built into the budget. The one-point-three-five million is part of our overall, as we looked at bonding to do over the course of the next five years. It's in line with what we had set aside to keep us at a consistent debt service levy and to make sure, and to ensure that we do not violate the usage of seventy percent of our debt capacity principle.
Very good. Okay. Is there anybody from the audience that has any comments? Questions or concerns? Okay, I see none. Counsel?
I have nothing.
He answered all my questions. I wanted to make sure we're staying underneath our seventy percent. It all fits in, so that's good.
You good?
Yep.
Okay, let's take it to vote.
I have a motion to close.
Second.
Kathleen?
Wilson?
Aye.
Davidson?
Aye.
Fleming?
Aye.
McCambell?
Aye.
Have a resolution expressing intent to enter into a loan agreement and providing for the levy of taxes.
Second.
Kathleen?
Wilson?
Aye.
Davidson?
Aye.
Fleming?
Aye.
McCambell?
Aye.
Okay. And it's good to know that we are staying within that, staying within that, that levy. That's good information. Next, this is time set for hearing for consideration of plans and specifications for the 2016 Seal Code Streets Reconstruction Project. Publication's been made in the Hawkeye as prescribed by law. Steve?
Mayor and City Council, this is a, an annual project for the next three years. We have a little over four-hundred-and-fifty thousand dollars budgeted. The project is outlined this year. We have a map up there. These are, there's three roads in Crapo Park that are being taken care of. Potter Drive, Brook Street, and Snyder Drive. Then in the central, around Central Street, Hillary Avenue from Summer to Central, Linwood Drive from Fourteenth to Central, Central from Parkway to Linwood. It is noted that there is a section here on Fourteenth Street from Parkway to Park that was removed, that was kind of under this original plan, in part due to cost considerations. And we've added Haskell, Haskell Street out by the airport. So the total budget for this, again, was for the project, was roughly four-hundred thousand. And the current engineer's estimate is at four-hundred-and-two thousand dollars.
Pretty close.
And bids for that will be received April 6th and approved at a council meeting thereafter.
I had some concerns, some people wanted to know, is, is the road going to look exactly like the work done on Main Drive in Crapo?
Yeah. Well, every year when we do that, till we get through the next year, when we use that crushed limestone, typically you do end up with that, I don't know, that powdery dust, dust road. But then, once it gets worn in typically after the second year, then you, then you get a nice hard surface like what you see on a lot of the other roads out there in Crapo Park or other, the other Seal Code streets. But that is, and I think Ryan explained it last time, we're considering using, instead of the limestone, a pebble stone as an alternate this year. If the coster will probably try that.
I, I, I'll tell you what, I, I got a lot of people that are hoping that we try that, just because it was, it was pretty rough unless you had a mountain bike doing some, doing some riding out there after that, that last deal. A lot of people like to ride out in the park, so that was the, that was the big concern. Are they gonna, is it gonna be like that? Is it gonna be big pieces of gravel? Or are they gonna mash, mash it down and cover it up? Or what's the deal?
If it is like it's been in typical past years, again, after we go through the summer, we get the heat and the asphalt kind of rejuvenates, it'll kind of reincorporate that crushed limestone, and then it should be like the rest. But that's, that's, several times that we've had, even before when we had Seal Code, that's always one of the age-old problems, the dust from that limestone that we put down, that if you don't get enough of it, then the road is tacky and oily. And if you get too much, then it's dusty. So it's a, it's, it's a, it's a trick when you, in the Seal Code process.
Thank you, Steve.
Is there anybody from the audience that has any questions, comments, or concerns? I see none. Counsel?
None for me.
Our street in front of my house was done a few years back. And it is, first time through, summer, it seems like it is a problem, but you have to look at the big picture. It turns out to be, for the cost involved, it turns out to be a pretty nice road bed. That lasts for a significant time. It's just part of the problem. It'd be nice if we could concrete every street down.
That would be, I'll go for that.
For the price of that, man, then we'd get a lot of work done. Okay, counsel, are you guys good then?
Um, yeah, I'm good.
I have a motion to close.
Second.
Kathleen?
Wilson?
Aye.
Davidson?
Aye.
Fleming?
Aye.
McCambell?
Aye.
I have a resolution approving plans and specifications for the 2016 Seal Code Streets Reconstruction Project.
Second.
Kathleen?
Wilson?
Aye.
Davidson?
Aye.
Fleming?
Aye.
McCambell?
Aye.
Okay. Nice habit, let's move forward. This is time set for hearing for consideration of an amendment to ordinance number thirty-three fifty-one. Westbrook Meadows Plan Unit Development, PUD by adding outlet to the provisions of the PUD. Publication has been made in the Hawkeye as prescribed. There's going to be, I got a cop drop, I just...
Give an update on that. This is a continuation of the previous phase of this development, which included Lot One, which was subdivided into lots for condo and townhouse development. This is a continuation of the existing development that's already located on Gear Avenue, but would be moving to the north on Lot A with the creation of additional lots in the new subdivision and continued similar development of townhouse, fourplex and duplex-type structures here. Part of the ordinance amendment would apply specifically to the lot setbacks within this development. Reducing front yard setback to twenty feet, side yard setback allowed as zero, lot line development where a structure is placed over a lot line. Rear yard setback shall be a minimum of twenty-five feet, with the exception of lots nine and twelve, which would be allowed a fifteen-foot rear yard setback. And then, as per the previous ordinance, PUD ordinance for the subdivision, each minimum lot size where a structure's, or units located on it should be three-thousand square feet. And the combined lot of two adjacent lots should be a minimum of six-thousand square feet, which just meets all of those requirements. So just a continuation of the planned development in this area, kind of the second phase to what's already occurred there, with similar conditions that would apply as before. And then they will go through the plating process concurrently to the zoning as well, so they can move forward if everything's approved on this. Now, this did go to the Planning Commission. February seventeenth, they voted six to zero to recommend approval of the PUD based on continuation of a previous development that was approved as part of this PUD that has been fully developed to the south and meeting the similar requirements to that.
Okay. Is there anybody that has any questions, comments, or concerns regarding this development? Mr. Pearson?
Mike Pearson, nine-twelve Monticello. I just wanted to reiterate, everything's consistent with Phase One that we did. And just wanted to offer, if you guys had any questions, I'd like to make sure I answered them, and I appreciate your support.
How many units are, are you putting?
Total of eighteen potential. I was gonna start another twelve here with your approval.
Okay. We appreciate all the work you do, Mike.
Thank you very much, and I appreciate your support.
You do good work, thanks, Mike.
Thank you.
Anyone else from the audience? Okay, counsel?
I'm good.
I'm good.
Good.
Okay, let's take it to vote, Kathleen. Oh, thank you.
I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Thank you, Kathleen.
Kathleen?
Wilson?
Aye.
Davidson?
Aye.
Fleming?
Aye.
McCambell?
Aye.
Your Honor, I move to approve the preliminary adoption of the first reading of an amendment to an ordinance number thirty-three fifty-one, Westbrook Meadows Plan Unit Development by adding outlet A to the provisions of the PUD.
Second.
Moved in second, Kathleen?
Wilson?
Aye.
Davidson?
Aye.
Fleming?
Aye.
McCambell?
Aye.
Okay, moving right along. Uh, this is time set for hearing for consideration of an ordinance rezoning the property locally, I'm sorry. Rezoning the property located west of Garden Avenue, Lawn Avenue, and Dill Street from R-one Single Family Residential to R-two Single Family Transitional Residential Zoning District with a planned unit development Southern Cross PUD overlay zone. Publication's been made in the Hawkeye as prescribed by law. Eric?
This is a similar type of development in that they're looking at zero lot line development for this as well, looking at duplex-type structures where each unit's on its individual lot, but a duplex would cross over two separate lots. Difference being, this is located in an R-one area currently, so they're asking to rezone to R-two, a single-family transitional with a PUD overlay. The R-two is intended to be a transition between single-family and either multifamily or commercial districts. This is C-one limited commercial directly to the west of this property with Fairway Food Store, and then a commercial vacant land that is yet to be developed to the west. The school's to the south, and then R-one, a single-family to the north and to the, well, it's single-family to the north and east, but it's actually R-two to the north as well. So it'd be a continuation of the existing R-two to the north and with a PUD overlay. The items addressed within the rezoning ordinance apply to the land use specifically. This would allow up to duplex structures which are allowed in R-two, single-family zoning districts, provided the lot size is six-thousand square feet. So similar to the previous development, minimum lot size for each individual unit would have to be three-thousand square feet. And then the combined of two adjacent lots would be a minimum of six-thousand square feet, which, which is consistent with our zoning for our two districts. Front yard setback should be a minimum of twenty feet. This would allow parking within the private property in front of the garage. Side yard setback shall be allowed zero feet between adjacent lots where a structure's on two separate lots. Rear yard setback should be a minimum of fifteen feet, and the lot coverage shall be a maximum of forty-five percent. Pedestrian access, sidewalk should be on all sides of public streets and shall connect to the existing public pathway to the west of the development. There is the, the trail that goes from West Avenue down to Mason Road, and they would have a connection from this development to that. Landscaping, minimum fifteen percent open space shall be provided. Architectural appearance should be, all structures should be compatible in architectural character with design elements shall be common for multiple structures within the development. Stormwater management, in order to ensure the logical and planned extension of sewers and stormwater drainage, detailed plans will need to identify the location of the facilities when plating and development occurs. So one note, based on that, this is the first phase, similar to the last development, first stage in the development, they're asking for a rezoning, and then would bring a preliminary plat forward based on the rezoning, which will be going in the Planning Commission February twenty-ninth. And that plat is what, where the drainage plans are required and where all the lot layout and the storm water system and sanitary system are designed. So that's, that will be coming later. It's not addressed within this zoning, this addresses the land use and setbacks. But the Planning Committee Commission did vote five to zero, with one abstaining to recommend approval of the requested rezoning, with the condition that the preliminary plat for Southern Cross subdivision be approved in order for the zoning change to take effect, so that they can properly address all the drainage issues through that subdivision process and make sure that all meets the requirements in order for this zoning to take effect as well. The preliminary plat, this isn't what you're approving, but this is just for reference on what they're looking to do, would continue Dill, Lawn, and Garden Streets into this development and allow a loop development where the street connects up to all three streets. Instead of three dead ends, they will connect up, allowing access through a new public street, Redwood Drive. As you see, Lot One and Two would be a lot where one structure would be on both lots with the zero lot line development, similar to what was proposed in Westbrook Meadows, and having zero lot line setback between them, but meeting the setbacks as specified in the PUD in all other instances. Just for reference, this being in an existing neighborhood to show how the other streets in the area. This previously was, Willow was a dead-end drive connected through to Mason Road with the construction of the school here. They do have three dead ends at the end of Garden Lawn and Dillow adjacent to this development. There's a dead end off of Dill and off of Aspen as well, which, all these are planned as dead ends so that they can hook into future development as that occurs. Unfortunately, we haven't had a connection in the last twenty years, other than the school, to tie in these streets to allow better access throughout this area. But this would allow three dead ends to no longer exist. And then future development between Sunrise West on the east and this development on the west would allow connections between Dill, Gilbert, Hiller Lane, which connects over here, and then Sequoia, which all will alleviate traffic, but we just don't know when that'll occur, because it, it's based on development demand and developers coming forward to develop this area. So I know those are some of the concerns, is additional traffic in the area, which this helps alleviate dead ends for emergency services, but doesn't affect connecting up to other developments in the areas at this point, so... A couple of things from the comprehensive plan. This is Low Density Residential, which in our comprehensive plan says suitable zoning districts are R-one, R-two, and R-three. It does state in growth areas designated for low-density residential may be appropriate to consider pockets of higher density residential or non-traditional uses. As this is kind of an exhibit of, it is more dense than what's in the existing area, but it does meet our density for R-two standards. If this was just an R-two district, this, these number of units would be allowed here based on our lot size. So it's not a deviation based on lot size, they're asking for reduced setback. So it's not a deviation based on lot size. They're asking for reduced setbacks based on the width of the lot here. It's an unusual-sized lot based on just kind of being a leftover to get two rows of typical lots, which are a hundred feet deep, and a public street, which is fifty or sixty feet of right-of-way. This width doesn't allow, so that's why the lot's reduced to eighty feet in depth instead of the hundred, so. Couple of examples of, based on the architectural character, what they're looking at developing here. Similar-type condos or duplex condo structures as we've seen in other areas of the community, Mason Meadows, Sunrise West, South, across from Blackhawk subdivision off Pawnee Drive. Most of the units they're looking at would include two-car garage. There are three lots that are somewhat smaller in size that would include a one-car garage, but would have additional off-street parking in front of them. So of the thirty units proposed, was it fourteen or twenty-four would be, have a two-car garage and six would have a one-car garage is what they're planning at this point, so. With that, if you have any other questions, I can try and answer them as well.
And you see, the density issue's been addressed and is not a concern. Is that right?
I wouldn't say it's not a concern of neighbors, but.
I'm not asking, I'm asking legally.
The density based on R2 standards, it does meet R2 standards for density. How the minimum lot size to have a duplex structure is six thousand square feet. And each of these two lots would be at least six thousand square feet. I think two of the lots are sixty-two hundred and the remaining, double check here. And the remaining are around nine thousand square feet, eight to nine thousand square feet. So it is, it's not just minimum-sized lots other than three lots. The rest are well about what our minimum standards are for R2 lot size. Thank you.
Okay. Well, I take it I probably have some people here that have some things that they'd like to share. So if there's somebody from the audience, I'm going to open it up right now. Sir, anybody has any questions, comments, or concerns regarding this development? Are you the official spokesperson or?
No.
Okay.
By no means am I the official spokesperson. Yes, I just get to be first. My name's Dennis Griswold. I live at twenty-nine twenty-four Dill Street. When we had the planning commission meeting, there were several even more neighbors than what are here tonight. And they were expressing, of course, as you mentioned, really big concerns about drainage because the water table's really high out there. We've already got standing water in our backyards when it rains more than an inch and a half or two inches. There's a big concern that depending on how they do the grading in this new subdivision or this new plat, we could end up with worse problems. And it wouldn't take really any degradation for us to have severe problems. My particular concern really has more to do with this density thing, and it's not so much density of number of people or whatever as much as it is the number of variances that are needed to the normal zoning code in order to make this work. The plat that he showed you up here with the street that runs between two rows of housing developments, it appears on the plat that I received that that's maybe a twenty-five-foot wide street in order to allow some extra room to build buildings on. What you have then is minimum setback in behind the buildings, which will, the ones to the east will about right next to the side yards of the existing homes. And I think that's a concern, especially when they started to describe during the planning commission meeting that the setback didn't necessarily include patios, so that you could build a patio that extended further back to the end of the back of a lot, which would be really close to the existing neighbors than in that case. The two flag lots, they said, are not usually, they're discouraged and those are integral part of this plan. The sidewalks, I see they originally petitioned to only have on one side. It sounds like we're not going to allow that. There'll be sidewalks on either side of the street. But, but I'm thinking that when several of the neighbors bought those end homes, what was in the plat at the time was a connecting street that would be adjacent to their lot line. So they would become a corner, a corner lot at that point, which would automatically give them buffer from whatever building was gonna happen adjacent to their homes because there'd be a street between them and whatever was built. In this case, there is no buffer. There's, there's comment about having garbage hidden from the street, but those, I suspect, would then put the garbage so that the people could look out their side windows and see it. You know, because if it was at the rear of the development, then the garbage receptacles would be where existing neighbors could, would have to, to look at it. In my mind, the variances that require, that are required to make this whole thing work are considerable. And when you add them all together, they're definitely not to what would be normal zoning code. And to approve the plat without having firm, I mean, approve the rezoning with those variances without having a firm approval of the plat, in my mind, is premature and maybe dangerous. Because if, if this developer decides not to do the development or to revise it, he's already got the variances into the zoning already approved, and then we're in trouble.
The condition is if the plat's not approved, then the zoning's not approved.
Yeah, I guess.
So that's taken care of in there.
My question would be, though, why would we be in a hurry to approve the zoning ahead of the plat?
So he can move ahead with his, that's just the normal process.
Yeah. The plat couldn't come forward to council because it doesn't meet our requirements unless the zoning's approved. And so it's, it's a two-step process.
It was brought before the planning commission as a paired, a paired proposal, the zoning change and the plat. And because of the concerns that we had about the drainage and the, and the streets and all that, they elected not to approve the plat at that time, but they did approve the zoning, which I have concerns about. And I think that covers at least what I had to say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name's John Kenny. I live at twenty-nine thirteen Dill Street. My concerns are very similar to Dennis's. The twenty-foot front setback and the fifteen are both variances. That's correct. Yeah, okay. And in the density of this property with those setbacks, you have to have that variance to allow for the density that they're proposing. And I believe that, that that is truly unfair to the property owners immediately adjacent to that. It is gonna put those homes very, very close. And I think that those homeowners and taxpayers had an expectation that any development would follow the same rules that they had had to follow. My other concern is the street extensions of Dill and Lawn because the proposal was to allow a twenty-seven-foot right-of-way, and those two streets are still thirty-foot right-of-way. So those extensions would neck down, and I believe that's really not a good idea to, to neck those streets down for the distance of one lot width. Those are my two concerns. I, I again follow Dennis Griswold on his objections also. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, John.
Any other comments, questions, or concerns?
I'm Lloyd Dola.
How you doing?
Hi. This is a subdivision that my son and I are proposing to do. I know that's been brought up about the density, but the only way we can justify the expense of doing this project, you know, without any funds from the city or any TIF or anything else, is to get that number of lots to justify the, you know, the expense of the development and the acquisition. Everything else is gonna be handled at the zoning meeting, you know, as far as some of their concerns. And I know that you've already, everything's subject to working hand-in-hand with the zoning. I mean, even if you approve this and we don't get through the zoning, then this is null and void anyway. Correct? So that's the only thing I want to say.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments from the audience? Okay. All right, thank you, counsel.
I've had several phone calls.
Have you?
Yes. I think they've got some genuine concerns. I mean.
I spent Saturday morning, half hour or so walking down Dill, Lawn, and Garden and on that property a little bit. Certainly, the concerns are legitimate.
Oh, yeah.
But it is one of our goals is to do the infill, take these empty spaces and do something with them. So, you know, it looks like a balancing act.
I, I would agree with you. It's a balancing act. Where, the problem that I think we're having is we're running out of places to develop. And unless we focus on infill, on the holes and the pockets within the city of Burlington, the bottom line is we're just, that is it. I think I can leave it at that statement. We're running out of places to develop. And because of that and people still wanting to move, that, that presents us with an opportunity for development. But I'll tell you, I had my neighbor, he's watching tonight, and he's not happy about it. And he took forty-five minutes, I was watching my clock, my watch, took forty-five minutes to take me over by there. And he's not really, he's not too keen on this, so I, I just need to, I don't know, I think I need to go back over there and just walk it again. I'm just not sure about that, but I, I really do want to see more development. I'm glad that Lloyd is looking at that place.
Yeah. I, I have to agree with the residents, you know, with their concerns. I'll be interested to see how the developer addresses those concerns with the, the next step. Yeah, I wouldn't, I certainly wouldn't want somebody else's property right up against my home.
If, if we want to see that next step, then we need to approve this in order to see the next step.
Counselman. Better late than never. How you doing?
All right.
All right. Well, that, that's where we're at. So we're going to, we're gonna have to make a decision. Counselman, you came in a little bit late, but we are on. And I'll, I'll give you a second if there's any questions that you have, that you want, that you'd like to have answered from Mr. Teslin. But we're on the rezoning of west of Garden Avenue, Lawn Avenue, and Dill Street.
And it is a first reading, so we can have time to consider a lot of other things, too.
Yeah, I will, I will, I'll wait till the next meeting.
Okay, okay. All right then.
I move to close the public hearing.
Second.
Moved in second. Kathleen.
Wilson.
Aye.
Davidson.
Aye.
Fleming.
Aye.
McCambell.
Aye.
Scott.
Aye.
Your honor, I move for preliminary adoption of the first reading of an ordinance rezoning the property located west of Garden Avenue, Lawn Avenue, Dill Street from R1 Single Family Residential to R2 Single Family Transitional Residential Zoning District with a planned unit development, Southern Cross PUD overlay zone.
Second.
Moved in second. Kathleen, let's vote.
Wilson.
Aye.
Davidson.
Aye.
Fleming.
Aye.
McCambell.
Aye.
Scott.
Aye.
Okay.
So, folks, you understand, that's just the first reading of the rezoning, so it doesn't mean we're in action yet, right, Lloyd? Okay.
And those of you, I would say this, those of you that do have concerns, please send us some emails if you, if you want some of our time. You can, you can definitely email us individually or as a counsel, but I'm sure nobody would have any problem trying to give you some time. I'm just around the corner, so McCambell S. or mayor@birlingtoniowa.org, send me an email and I'll try to make some time to hear you out. We definitely want everybody to get their voice heard on that, so. Let's.
Your honor, I have a motion for final adoption of an ordinance vacating and selling a portion of South Fourteenth Street right-of-way located adjacent to one eight, or eighteen-hundred, eighteen oh two, and eighteen oh four, South Fifteenth Street, Burlington, Iowa.
Second.
Eric. What do you got?
No changes from previous meetings. This is adjacent to three properties now instead of the original four, would be an easement over the property. Request to vacate and become private ownership with those easements on the property.
Okay, we've already been through this drill, so is there anybody from the audience that has any questions or concerns regarding the right-of-way? I see none. Counsel?
Um, I don't know. This is, I feel like we've kind of talked about this so much in so many different ways. It's kind of confusing now. I just want to clarify, I guess, from my own understanding, that although there is an easement, that they can still put like a cement driveway or a solid surface. Is that correct?
Yeah.
Okay.
They could have a driveway to it and park on it.
And it could be anywhere on that property.
Yeah, as it currently states, yeah, there's no restriction unless you place that on it.
I think the only thing that's actually going up is a fence, truth be told, but anyways. Anybody, anybody from the audience that has any questions or concerns on the right-of-way? Nobody? Okay. Just want to make sure.
Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Eric was, was notice sent out to the adjoining neighbors on, about the hearings?
Yeah, everyone within two hundred feet would have been notified.
Say that again.
Everyone within two hundred feet would have been sent notice.
Okay. There was a couple of neighbors that weren't certain that they received anything, but it's, they weren't, they weren't certain.
If it was a rental property, gets sent to the property owner.
So I know for a fact that all the adjoining, all the listed on this have been notified for a fact.
All the, what do you mean?
All of the adjoining, Dane, Mason. It's in the packet, I can't.
Roy McCullough and the Ryers.
Yep.
I've driven by that area about three times.
Yeah, these are all the ones on Fifteenth. I just wonder if anybody on Fourteenth Street had been notified or within two hundred feet of that. The ones most affected, did the people on Fourteenth Street get notified?
Yeah, yep.
Okay.
Do we have anybody objecting to this?
I haven't had anybody.
I've heard nothing.
Satisfied, or?
You, um, Tim, you were saying that the, the properties, the seventeen-hundred properties, that they're sewer or?
The lateral lines on, on the east side of Fourteenth Street tie to the sewer that runs under the alley that we're vacating. If any struck, any fence or any flat concrete work that's put on there, if those sewers have to be repaired, it's most likely going to be with the responsibility of the person that's repairing their sewer to replace that, that loss to the person that owns that property.
That's where I have the problem, I guess.
No.
So Roy McCullough, eighteen-hundred, South Fifteen. I've kind of spearheaded this project. And we talked to Eric about it and, first of all, we can't, we're concrete on someone else's sewer, and we can't finish the alley. We're gonna take the alley out, but we can't build a permanent structure there. And if we were going to do anything at all, we'd make sure that we have to, as owners of this ground, we would have to make sure that we did not. did not impede their sewer system.
Okay.
We could either pay to move the sewer system, or not put anything on top of it, we've already discussed that with the city engineer and Charlie Nichols, that if we want to build something there in their sewers in a way, then it's our responsibility to move the sewer, so that the homeowner across the street on Fourteenth doesn't incur any expenses.
Okay. Is that gonna be put in your abstract and noted as such?
I would assume it's going to be, I don't, I don't know.
It'd need to be part of this ordinance, I would assume, if we want to include language like that.
Yeah. We know that as, since starting to buy this ground and have the alley vacated, that Dane and Tim Royer and I, we've known this from the beginning, that if we do anything, we have to do it off the sewer, or we have to pay to move the sewer, so that the other homeowners doesn't incur the cost.
Okay. Now, I, I'm only looking to the future, that when you're not in that house any longer.
I hope it's a while.
And somebody, I do, too, I mean, I, I do, too, but you, you don't know, and we don't know, and that's the reason why, that, um, it's, uh, I know that how expensive it is to replace a sewer now, especially for those folks over there, whether there's, whether you own it or not.
Right.
I mean, it's, it's a deep sewer, and it's...
But if that's put into the, if that's put into the ordinance and everything, and you sell your property, it would be brought up into your deed and abstract, and the buyer would have the understanding that that would be their responsibility.
Good.
So then we're good, but we'd like to have that added in to the language?
But currently, as it stands, that's not in here.
We cannot approve this without that language, and...
Well, that's what I'm saying, we're, we're good, but we just want to have that added in to the language, right?
You're right, you're right, your honor. So, do we need to continue this, and have that amended?
Or do you want to...
How do we do that, Eric?
You'd either have to make an amendment stating it, or continue it, we could bring back language for the work session.
Is that part of your, is that part of your conditions of approval, language that you have, or is it...
We have the easement, but it doesn't specify responsibility.
Do you, would that be where you would make that change?
Yeah.
Where you would add?
Would just clarify on number three, state the easement.
So, that easement shall be maintained over that entire portion of the right-of-way being vacated for utility maintenance part? You'd, you'd make a clarif, and, and no concrete structure will be built over a private sewer?
Yeah.
That, essentially, that kind of a word addition?
Yeah.
So, we have to start over for the...
I, I don't think so, that's just...
It's clarifying what the easement responsibility is.
Can we, can I just move to amend by adding what Jim just said?
You, that, or if you want to see it in writing before...
I think you're gonna want to see it in writing before, and...
I agree with you.
At the work session, to continue it to the next one.
I think that's the right thing.
And make sure that we get that done appropriately. I've, I've changed on the second before, I don't know that I've ever changed on a third reading, so I want to make sure that we do that appropriately.
I think you're right.
Sounds good to me. Okay, so...
In that case, I move to continue to the next council meeting.
I'll second your move.
Is, does that kind of hit what you're trying to get at, too, Tim?
Yeah, I just, I just want everybody protected, the ones that are buying the property and the ones across the street.
Mm-hmm.
I, I, from, from the conversations I've had, there are, it's my understanding that there's possibility that there's gonna be access to the individual properties, and that, that potentially, they don't understand that you can't just drive over the grass, that you have to have a hard dust-free surface in which to move the vehicles from the street to the private property. And that, once that alley's closed, that, to make, to get access, you're gonna have to have asphalt or concrete, uh, access.
I guess the question, the question I'd have Eric, and I don't know how this works with the property owners there, we have our sewer main that goes through there, are they allowed to have a hard surface go over our sewer main?
Yeah, and if you're no different than any other...
And if we have a break there, do we, we bring that back up at our expense?
I'd have to check with Ryan or Chris on that.
I think we just want to know, I don't think that's a, something that stops it, but we do need to know what we're potentially into with that.
I believe the city would be responsible, but I...
I think we would be, too.
Okay, so...
Was there a second?
Oh, Bob's second.
Bob?
Continuing to the second, to the next meeting?
Yeah.
Okay.
Let's take a vote.
This is to continue to April fourth?
Correct.
Wilson?
Aye.
Davidson?
Aye.
Fleming?
Aye.
McCambell?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Thank you, folks.
Continue.
Your honor, I have a resolution approving agreement with IDOT, accepting bridge funding for the Mount Pleasant Street Bridge.
Second.
Steve.
Mayor and City Council, this is a formal approval authorizing the mayor to sign approval to accept the million-dollar in funds for the replacement of the Mount Pleasant Street Bridge. Previously, you approved us to submit it, the state sent us a letter, I think February twenty-ninth, giving us ninety days to approve it, and then, which is what this would do, and then we have like three years to spend the money, and the intent is to get started on the design of this, get an RFQ out in the near future, and set things in motion so construction can be completed as soon as possible. Definitely, hopefully, the bridge takes a long time, but pretty much well within the three years.
I just know it's a blessing to get that, that million-dollar money, too, from the, from the STP. Is there, is there anybody from the audience that has any questions or concerns? Okay, I see none.
I will add, the cost of this is, projected cost is covered in the capital improvement for beginning next year, so.
Counsel?
Nothing.
Good, glad we're getting to it.
Okay. Yeah, we don't want to wait any longer, the price is gonna go up, Kathleen?
The bridge is gonna come down, only the other.
Wilson?
Aye.
Davidson?
Aye.
Fleming?
Aye.
McCambell?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Okay, I see it.
Your honor, I moved we adopt the city of Burlington money purchase plan number ten dash hyphen eighty-six eighty-two.
Second.
So, this money purchase plan would be through the ICMA RC, which is where we currently have our deferred compensation plan, and we also have one with a Voia account, too. This would be only set up for the city manager, this is when we had his contract, when he started with us, he chose not to participate in IPRs, and so we're matching what everyone else is getting put into IPRs, goes into the deferred comp right now. And so, in working with ICMA and looking at how our plan's set up, they suggested that this is a better plan to be, to have the employer contributions go into. So, that's what the employer contributions, the current rate of IPRs right now is eight-point-nine-three, so that's the amount every pay period that would go in there for Jim, and any city managers going forward, if they elect the same option of opting out of IPRs.
Is Jim in favor of this, have you talked to him?
Yes, I am. I am right here.
I heard he's pretty ticked, uh, we're gonna do it anyway.
This is a, one of the things with state statute allows, there's a few different positions that are allowed to opt out of ICMA.
IPRs.
Or, out of IPRs. City managers are one of the positions, I think county administrators are another, there's a hand, school superintendents might be a third, there's, there's a handful that...
And the elected officials.
Is there currently an upper limit on IPRs?
An upper limit?
No.
Once you get up to a certain number, you don't contribute any?
Oh, no, no.
Okay. Any questions from the audience? I see none, counsel?
Nope.
Okay, Kathleen, let's take a vote.
Wilson?
Aye.
Davidson?
Aye.
Fleming?
Aye.
McCambell?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Okay, I see it.
Your honor, excuse me, your honor, I move we approve the road and parking access agreement with Columbia Associates LP, Burlington, Iowa, LP.
Second.
Yay.
Mr. Tisland?
Actually, this is, I'll start it, but Eric's putting a map up, um, and I will, as we get into this, we previously purchased, had an agreement to purchase from the owner, Columbia Associates LP, a slice of land for seventy thousand five hundred, I think was the dollar amount back in November that we approved, and the intent for that purchase was to allow as, for the, with the development on the Manor site, to have a common access point to that site that is immediately across from the access point to the north, right next to the new coffee house and sporting goods place. I'm so good with, with names, Starbucks, um, but, so as we've gone through that process, the property owners had a couple of concerns, particularly in regards to what the potential impact on Walgreens business, and brought forward some points that they wanted to make sure that we really had lined, outlined for how we were going to deal with. These are things that had verbally been talked with, with the landowner, but not memorialized in the purchase agreement that we had. The two issues that were addressed had, or two main issues that you see in this agreement, had to do with how access would work during the construction of that new roadway that was the entrance point into the Manor property. They wanted to ensure that they didn't lose an access onto Agency Street there that allowed traffic to flow both in and out, from both the east and west, during, during all phases of that construction. And the developers' engineering firm put together some pretty good detailed schematics for how to address those issues, and as Eric's got the outline there, that's really where they're looking for that roadway to be built, and they'll phase the development there, of the development of that road, to allow a portion of the road to be built while maintaining the existing drive, build a new entrance into the Walgreens that's a little south of the existing one on the east side of the property, route that traffic then on a newly constructed eastern portion of that entry out onto Agency, while the old one is torn out and the remainder of that new roadway is built. The way the, the agreement is written, if we are not able to, for any day that we are not able to maintain access there, there's a thousand-dollar penalty. We're looking at the portion of time that, from the developers looking at this, they see about a two-week window for construction, depending on where weather is, good weather would be several days quicker than that, bad weather could be a little bit longer, but their goal is to keep from having any days where, where there, where there isn't access both directions, but we have to recognize that the potential is there, that there will be days where we don't get, meet the terms there for...
Two weeks' worth of days, fourteen thousand dollars?
I mean, I think that's, we don't see that occurring, but it could be, I mean, we just need to be prepared that that's kind of what they put out there as an outside for, for what you could have the construction occurring there. Again, even during that construction time, their goal is not to have access closed down that would cause us to kick in at all, but this is there to protect Walgreens, and to put, really, to put some pressure on, on us to make sure that we coordinate that, that construction.
That sounds reasonable to me.
I don't know if you have the other drawing that is listed on there?
Which one?
Uh, the one that would show the new apron being constructed for truck traffic?
Is it a slum, or?
Well, not particularly. Yep.
There, you can see, one of the concerns they had with, as we change drives, and where that access point is into their parking lot, it changes how truck traffic flows through it, and they did some studies in regards to how traffic, truck traffic flow would go for delivery, and now, as it has to make some additional turns to go around this, the building, it goes, truck traffic flows through the lot, and has to turn around the northeast corner of the Walgreens store, and for, to make sure that you have adequate space there for the, the trailer to, to carry around, there needs to be an additional apron built onto their drive that goes around that portion of the building. That would be our responsibility to ensure that that got constructed as well. Those are the primary things that you see in there, there's another concern that was raised, was with that new entry that was coming off of the new road, that's the entry into the Manor site property, their access off of that, they wanted to make sure that we didn't have waterfall, water flow that drained onto their parking lot, they want it to drain away. Booner Cooper and Zook has that designed with a slope, I don't think you can tell on this, but I think it's about one-point-nine percent grade flowing the opposite direction, and we just have to ensure that it is flow, the grade does flow it away from the property.
Okay.
And, as you notice, you have some of the other terms in here, we're trying to get a deal closed by the end of next week, the prop, the developer, if we don't get this done quickly, has a project that goes by the wayside, so we are doing our best to try to get all this coordinated to move forward expeditiously. This, we've talked with the landowner about these issues, and they've agreed, and that part of this agreement that they signed off on is they will turn all the pieces that we need over within three days, we've, I think we can have the abstract updated by tomorrow, speaking with the attorney, so we should, are, are in line to ha, to have everything go through.
Well, I personally don't think they're asking too much, considering...
Well, it creates an awful lot of stress for all of us, and I know the developer, too, has a little bit of stress over wanting to see this last detail for, for their ability to purchase, get completed.
Let's go to the audience, is there anybody that has any questions or concerns on this development? Okay, I see none, counsel?
I'd just like to hear that word, closing.
Until it happens, it's not there, so.
Counselman Scott? Okay, all right, Kathleen, let's take a vote, please.
Wilson?
Aye.
Davidson?
Aye.
Fleming?
Aye.
McCambell?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Okay, I see it, so we can get rolling on that, all right. This is time designated for comments from the audience, if there's something that we have not covered tonight, and you have some comments or a concern, this is your opportunity, is there anybody tonight? Everybody's good? Stephanie, you have a concern?
I looked it up, there is a IPRs limit, for calendar year 2016, it was two-hundred-and-sixty-five-thousand of wages, mm-hmm, so that's where they stopped taking out the IPRs, so...
Might be a couple years till you get there.
He's not close.
That might be.
Stephanie said, "He's not close." No offense.
None taken.
Okay. Anybody else from the audience? Okay, you guys have been fantastic tonight, thank you so much. Mr. Tisland, anything before we close?
Actually, just a couple of quick reminders, the youth summer camp at Perkins Park registration's available online now, so anyone looking for something for their kids to spend the summer at, that's a great camp that we have there, and the Bridge Run registration is available online as well, so anyone looking to run up Snake Alley across the bridge, encourage you to sign up for that, run, walk, five K or ten K, and golf course is open, weather dependent, so encourage you to get out to Flynn Hills Municipal Golf Course.
Has the challenge been made this year again, on the Bridge Run?
I'm afraid, I am afraid that I might have to pay someone a meal this year, I almost got beat last year, and I think that's why they changed it to a ten K, 'cause I was being passed on the bridge, and then they just, just ran out of time to beat me, so that might be the addition of that two-tenths of a mile.
Counselwoman Wilson?
Yes, I will be gone next Monday, the twenty-eighth, so I don't know how we want to...
Thanks for bringing that up, because I will be in Des Moines on the twenty-eighth, and I will be on my way back, so, um, I'll, I'll be coming back, I should be on my way back, I should be on the road by one thirty-two at the latest, so, um, I can make it, you know, I'm just gonna be late, so it's up to you guys, but as soon as I hit Burlington, I'm coming straight to City Hall.
I don't, it's no problem, we'll be here.
Okay. Counselman Scott?
Nothing.
Okay. I just have, I want to thank Lisa Walsh and the Mississippi River Parkway Committee... I just have, want to thank Lisa Walsh and the Mississippi River Parkway Commission for, for their hard work and what they're trying to do with the, the Mississippi River Road, and I want to say thank you for inviting me to that event this morning. Also, just want to give a shout about the Midwest Magic Event, again, a big shout out to Brett Mitchell, to Ms. Burlington for coming, thank you for taking pictures with the kids, they were really excited in there to see you. Ms. Iowa, we thank you for coming and for singing, it was fantastic. I want to thank my son Shane for wearing the outfit the whole time sweating, thanks son for watching. I want to thank Pat Cohen for showing up in the tux, he knows everything that he did, it was fantastic. Want to thank Jason Hutchison for his support, want to thank Officers On for taking a pie in the face, and I want to thank Chief Redbeard for, for wearing the red beard the entire time, it was a fantastic event, looking forward to next year, but I, I could talk about that event for another half an hour, and I'm not going to, because I know everybody wants to leave, but again, thanks everybody for the support, and thanks to Police Department, it was, it was an awesome event, Chief, it was really, really good, better than last year, better than last year. And thanks to the Fire Department too, for showing up, all the EMTs, man, you guys, you guys are superheroes, that's all I got.
Tim, how many Easter egg hunters did you have out on Saturday morning?
I don't know how many hunters, but I know there were at least 100 people there.
Sweet. Good deal. South Hill Easter egg hunt was on Saturday morning. Didn't look like it was too hard to find Easter eggs. Also, last week on Thursday, I guess it was, the Transportation Advisory Committee met and rated the five projects that were submitted, one, two from Burlington, one from Fort Madison, one from Montrose, and one from Mount Pleasant, and again, this year Burlington's Washington Street project finished second in the rankings, or Fort Madison's, they're redoing their old Highway 61 through town, and this is their third phase, they got approved, so now they're done, so they're not submitting anymore.
Yeah, hope not.
So maybe next year, we might have a chance.
How about eggs and issues?
Eggs and issues on Saturday morning, we spent a good deal of time talking about the same thing that we talked about with the governor, with water infrastructure, except we didn't have Don there to give a, a tour, but Jason did a good job, he used Charlie's slideshow presentation and made a good, good presentation about it, and I think the people that were there, maybe might have been in shock, sticker shock.
How much, what's our need? Do you remember?
100 to 150, somewhere in there, million.
Million.
We're talking.
Of investment over like a 20-year timeframe? I'd say the 100 million is probably the more realistic number, that's both for the, that's looking at the flood mitigation project, sewer projects that need to be done, sewer line replacement, water plant upgrade that needs to occur, an upgrade puts us on that, more that 110 type million dollar cost estimate, if it was a replacement of the plan itself, that would be where you're getting more into the 160 million dollar range. We can't afford to, to, to do that, that much improvement, we just realistically cannot afford to, to spend that much money.
I will say that Representative Sands, who's in charge of the Ways and Means Committee, is not very fond of Governor Branstad's proposal. He has a proposal, but he's not ready to talk about it publicly yet, because he's not sure his caucus is going to support it, so.
It's at least a discussion starter for trying to figure out how do we deal with these issues that are so large.
And it's not just Burlington, of course. That's it, ma'am.
Thank you, sir.
That's all I have at this time.
But you reserve the right.
I reserve the right, Mr.
City Manager?
Leaf collection program, the spring leaf collection program begins next week, that's three weeks long, March 28, Monday, the first area town that would be done would be Friday's route, so it's always the, the day before's garbage collection is that day's leaf collection pickup for that three-week process, so that goes March 28 through April 15. We are continuing work on union negotiations, hoping to be able to have progress, to be able to report over the next few weeks to the council, really optimistic that we'll be able to have something to bring forward to you at some point here soon. US Bank Building, you've gotten, Chief, the reports on that?
Yeah, I just got it today, and I, I haven't even reviewed it yet, but I'll request more copies to make sure everybody gets a copy.
So we'll get, we'll get those reports distributed here over the next few days. Housing Study, I think all of you received an email that, for a presentation to be done up at the Chamber in the Wine Guard Room on April 12 at 5:30, it's a Tuesday, so would encourage you all to attend, to be able to, it's a spot where the people who did the report will be able, will present and be available for questions and answers. And I think there was an RSVP on that, if any of you didn't receive that, let, let us know, and we'll take care of that for you, but it had an RSVP by April 8, I think, if that, if I'm remembering the date right on that. I know I haven't responded to it, but that email was sent out like last Thursday. Has anyone seen that?
Yeah.
So it did get to everybody, all right. And I think that's it for what I had for today.
Okay. Well, if there's nothing else.
Your Honor, I move that we adjourn this meeting at this time.
Second. Kathleen, let's vote it out.
Wilson?
Aye.
Davidson?
Aye.
Fleming?
Aye.
McCambel?
Aye.
Scott?
Aye.
Thanks, everybody, for hanging out with us tonight, good night.
Thank you, counsel.